All right, it is 5:31 and we're going to go ahead and get tonight's meeting started. If I can have everybody that wants to join us with the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next, we are going to read the land acknowledgement and Director Weatherspoon's going to read that for us.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Kowalski tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you. Okay, entertain a motion for tonight's agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as proposed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Hey, we get to go into our special recognition in National Library Week and Director Boeckner is going to go ahead and read that proclamation for us.
Thanks, Shuni. Whereas libraries of all types are the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses serving their communities, whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of belonging and community, whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building and everyone is welcome to use their resources. Whereas for people lacking broadband at home, libraries provide access to computers and Wi-Fi, even checking out Internet hotspots and laptops. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia content, and educational programs. Whereas in time of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually. Whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the communities regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or associate economic status. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Evergreen School District Board of Directors and the Evergreen School District Administration proclaim National Library Week April 3rd through the 9th, 2022. Because of you, libraries transform lives and communities.
Thank you, Julie. And if Kristi Peak wouldn't mind coming up and accepting that proclamation?
Librarians in the district, and I just want to introduce Jennifer and Paul who are at Emerald and Chehalis Middle School. You might have seen Paul's amazing ReadCon on Sit Down With A Soup today, so just brought them along to represent.
Wonderful, thank you. Any comment?
I was just thinking on the fond memories I have of when I was a kid and I loved being at the library at the school and in the summer I'd ride my stingray to the community library and get my books in my basket, you know, and all that and read it under the covers with the flashlight kind of thing and just, I just, it's never gone away. I just love books and I enjoy that and my own daughters really had great experiences when they were in school with the teacher librarians there at Harmony and Pacific and Evergreen and so I'm thankful that we have you in our system.
I can attest to that, too. The library was sort of my go-to place at school. Playground bullies don't come to the library and so that was a safe place for a lot of students, including my own kids, as they grew up and came through the schools and they were more comfortable there, they had their lunches there. They had the instruction of our librarian, Paul Warner, for several years and so, and yeah, the ReadCon was, we've gushed about it before here, I think, but it was a really, really good day. And that's the kind of dedication that these folks add to the schools, make it a community center that way and thank you, thank you so much.
I think, too, it's, you know, as I've been talking a lot to people about teacher librarians and what they add to our curriculum and our assistant, our system, people think, you know, a lot of us older people, we remember the books, the Dewey Decimal System, you know, the index cards to find the books, all of then the lady checking it out and using the little stamp, but you know, now it's media, it's computers, it's, you know, helping kids research in a bigger world and it's become such a technical profession and so I find it really fascinating how it's evolved over the years, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next is the board consent agenda. Entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the board consent agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the superintendent's consent agenda.
I move approval of the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Next is the superintendent report.
Thank you. I'll be brief because I have a more lengthy report to report on the main focus of my work over the last couple of weeks and that's related to our levy and our budget reduction planning. So I'm excited to tell you that I've gone to probably 34 out of our 38 schools and I've visited with principals and walked the hallways and gone into classrooms and I've just been completely and thoroughly blown away and impressed and it's also really helped, helping me with some of the very difficult and challenging decisions I made, having talked to some folks and interacted with them and understanding their unique needs and situations, so I'm appreciative of that time. We spent about an half hour in our cabinet meeting with Doug Nathan who's going to be supporting both the board and the cabinet related to team building and so that work is ongoing and we'll be setting some dates shortly to begin that work. We're really excited to begin that part and that's something the board has wanted to work on, both our ability to work effectively as a team and build trust with each other is really foundational for us to be able to work with our community and build trust with our community, so I think that's going to be important work that we'll all benefit from. And I just can't get my brain away from Victoria on that with her sissy bars and banana belt seat in her basket and her books.
And a ponytail.
That was quite a vision. And a ponytail. So that's my report.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is action items for the board, the curriculum recommendation. Actively Learn English Language Arts Curriculum was actually presented at, in a workshop session and brought forward for a first reading at the last board meeting. We do have Michael and Marlena online or on Zoom if we have questions, but have any comments or questions arise since our last meeting? Does the board have any questions? Any questions from the audience? Okay, seeing no questions, I would go ahead and entertain a motion for second reading and adoption.
Are we doing these separately?
We are going to do them separately, so right now it's just the Actively Learn English Language Arts Curriculum.
I move to adopt the Actively Learn English Language Arts Curriculum.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Next on the agenda is the illustrative, I can never say that word, math. The K-5 curriculum was presented in a workshop session and brought forward for a first reading at the last board meeting. Have any comments or questions arise since the last meeting? Any comments, questions from the board?
Just that I think that it definitely is in alignment with what we're wanting to do to have a more continuous evolution of foundational math all the way through to secondary and I think that's something that we've needed for a while and it's going to be a good thing for our kids, I really feel comfortable with it.
And I can echo that conversation and the, with the conversations I've had with principals and teachers, there's a lot of excitement about having a continuum of K-12 math curriculum that's adopted and our goal will be to really work hard to provide good, solid professional development and hold ourselves accountable for having some integrity with the curriculum, so we're excited to lean into that work.
One of the things, questions I have, and I don't know if it's for you, John, or for Rebecca, or who, but you know, in the past, we've had curriculum adoptions of various subjects and obviously we, as a board, we want to approve, approve these so that our kids are getting the best possible curriculum, but sometimes it's not being used with fidelity throughout the system. And so I guess one of the questions I have as we look at it, at these adoptions, is whether or not we need to do anything within policy so that it's very clear that if we adopt a curriculum by the board, that it is an expectation that it's used as our curriculum and not at will.
Yeah, and that's one of the themes as I'm talking to principals, is the desire to really have a curriculum that we're all using across the system so that we have a guaranteed viable curriculum, so all the students are getting an excellent experience. So I don't think policy will be required because in practice, we're going to do just exactly what you're suggesting and I think in talking to our teachers and our principals, everybody's eager to do that, to get to some consistency for our students, so we'll, we'll make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Hold on, your mic's not on.
Oh, thank you. I know I mentioned it at the last meeting when you were doing the first reading. You know, my daughter, she struggles with too many options for teaching her math and, you know, my wife's teaching her home through the Home Choice Academy and really just, I think a lot of kids are in the same boat, that you spend more time teaching them four different ways to add numbers together than you're not spending as much, as much time on the one way that really, you know, that would be, I would think you'd want to look for the best way and yeah, if you're spending less time teaching them, then, you know, it's just, it confuses them, having more than one or two ways, it really, as I said last time, keep it simple and I won't use that last word again on that, thank you.
Oh, it's, just real quick, so it does sound like then that having a curriculum that's used across the whole system that's very consistent will kind of answer that.
Yeah, yeah, if you, you know, just don't make too many choices for, you know, how to teach, doing, you know, things that really, you know, you really require really just the one or two best ways and if you give them too many ways, it just confuses them and then you're not spending as much time teaching them the one or two most direct, most common ways, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I could add, just that, I gotta put this sentence together. His comments resonate because that was an experience my daughters had facing the eight different ways to find the square of the, or the area of a circle, or whatever it was that they were doing in elementary school, but I also noticed in the years that they grew up, that they would have some teachers who would be really excited about reading and literacy and books and fewer, but other teachers who were really excited about math, but the combination of the two, it presented an attitude shift to them. They loved their teachers, but when they could see their teacher was not as enthusiastic about math. They made choices in first, second grade about math that kept them from taking any joy in it in the future in part. I mean, one teacher is not the sole influence on a child, but we know that especially for girls, enthusiasm about math is harder to reach than it is for boys. It's, it's just a fact, right? And if we're going to see an increase in math literacy and interest in mathematics, which, you know, in my career went on, I get excited about math because I know how many problems and how many ways you can use and solve problems that way if you're creative about it, and so that creativity is one thing that I hope is maintained as part of this curriculum.
Thank you. Okay. Now we, I think that was, any other questions from the audience before I move on? Then I will entertain a motion to approve and, for approval and adoption of the illustrative math K-5 curriculum, and I will have to learn how to say that word.
I'll give it a try. I move approval and adoption of the recommendation to adopt illustrative math for the K-5 grades.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you guys, thank you Marcus, Michael and Marlena for all your work on that. Okay, next on the agenda is our Good News Report. Craig.
Oh, you missed Teaching and Learning.
Did I? I did, I'm sorry. Hold on, Craig, sit back down. I'm getting ahead of myself. So next on the agenda is Teaching and Learning. Rebecca.
Thanks, Good News.
Hold on, one second, let's get your, go ahead.
Superintendent Boyd, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to share some updates about our Teaching and Learning Department with you today. Just three updates for you this evening. First, I would like to offer thanks and gratitude toward the principals, the directors, everyone, the PTAs who helped get the word out about our need for parent members of the Instructional Materials Committee. We do believe that we will have a full slate to present to you and it's my understanding that that has been done in workshops, so I anticipate that will be May 10th, with those then coming back to, for approval on the May 24th board meeting. So we recognize how important it is to get those parent voices heard and so we're looking forward to including those. Second, as a result of reviewing those procedures, we're beginning discussions about elevating student voice and including students on that committee. There's a body of research that talks about how much, how important it is for students to not only have their own voices, but to see their colleagues, other students' voices in these events, and so the opportunity in particular to include student voices on things which directly impact them, like instruction, like building, like those things, school environment, are very important. So we are beginning those discussions about including students there and we'll certainly update you and bring that forward to you when we have a recommendation for that. Finally, I know our superintendent, Superintendent Boyd, has given you coherence and I hope you, if you've had a chance to dive into that, that you're enjoying it. Our Teaching and Learning Team has read the first three chapters and in particular, we spent quite a bit of time at our last meeting talking about our district's strengths and opportunities as they pertain to the coherence frameworks for tenants, focusing directions, cultivating collaborative cultures, securing accountability, and deepening learning. And we're looking forward to finishing that book at our next Teaching and Learning meeting and then beginning to really think about all of our various aspects of work in the various departments who meet there and bringing it together to move our district's work forward.
I have a question, going back to the Instructional Materials Committee.
Yes.
Sometimes we have community members who have skills or interests in, in that committee. Is there any way that we could consider having, if there's a community member that would like to be on that committee, that we can think about that as we're thinking about the student connection there as well?
I think you anticipated me and something we needed to talk about last time and you've anticipated something you'll soon see. That procedure in particular in 2020 refers in one point with, to community members, but in the list of the members, it specifically calls out parents. This time we've interpreted as parents, but we recognize that there are community members with expertise in this area and we are thinking about how we can also blend that in there as well. So thank you for the feedback. Certainly we need to tighten up the language because we all value our policies and procedures mirroring what's actually happening, or more importantly, us mirroring what's in those, and so we want to tighten that language up and consider whether community members would be a great asset. We know there's some wonderful people with some expertise, some voices who we could elevate in the community on that, who may not have children in the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thought the current, the current makeup of the IMC had a, like a primary grades, intermediate, and secondary, or elementary, middle school, and high school parent representatives, is that the title that you saw?
The parents are just, it just says parents, it doesn't break those out in that way. It does in other areas, like it has primary, intermediate, middle, and high teachers. Principals are broken out slightly differently than that, but on parents, it did not specify grade levels for those.
Oh. I was on the IMC 10 years ago and I think 12 years ago, a long time, so might have changed since then. I wanted to ask you about, I'm going to come back to student voice on the IMC, because when I served on that committee, its purpose was to ratify that the process was followed for adopting or recommending curriculum to the board. There wasn't, I guess there wasn't a lot of feedback or change possible the way that it was organized. And in that sense, do you see a reorganization of the IMC to meet the requirements, the statutes for the IMC in state law plus some other things, or do you, fundamentally, what role do you see?
Well, a secondary function that we have here, although we haven't had this in a long time, the IMC also manages book challenges.
Right.
Whether those are to our libraries, and I think that would be in part a very important place to have student voices as well and their contributions, and so although that isn't a regular, I shouldn't say, it's not a predictable function of that group, it is one of their tasks. But I think it would be great to assign students also to be able to support that work of, did we follow our processes? Help them become more engaged, help them see what our processes are so that they could speak to, you know, another student to say, well, how did we end up with this body of work that we're now studying high school social studies with? And they could say, well, a committee was formed and this is how it goes through in the board, to have them.
And a lot of those packets that would come before us then had descriptions of the students who participated in the original scoring and selection at this or that school, wherever it was that they were piloting, each of the curricular textbooks that they were proposing, and it sounds like you imagine a larger role for students in the whole process.
Or at least different.
Yeah.
To be included on that committee.
Does that mesh well with our ideas for the student representatives to the board? Would they be?
I think it would be a great match for that work as well, so that students would see themselves in, you know, kind of mirrored throughout adult participation in our community. You know, certainly time for further discussion about that, but I think having been a part of a district and a board that had student representatives, I think it could be a great match for that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Equity Inclusion, and that is Clarissa. She always looks so happy to come talk to us, I love it.
I am, it is my pleasure, every time. So thank you all for having me. I have learned that my computer always blocks my face and I enjoy looking at you all's faces, so I'm going to use a different method today. So it is my pleasure to report that our department continues to support the improvement of our district's effort towards improved outcomes for all of our students. It's just, I'd just like to remind the board and our community that our equity work is not a replacement for academics, but is an enhancement, right, to ensure that all of our students have the tools to be effective, independent learners of rigorous content. One of the things that we are working towards is to make sure that we are helping to embody the operational expectations of equity, and so my report tonight to you is going to hit on the three areas that our work between now and the last time I reported has been implemented. So for our first item, we addressed item four of the OE for Equity, and that asks us to create and support learning environments that are conducive to learning for all students. And the way we've been doing that since last we met is our counselors. They have been working with our SEO Coordinator, Casey Lyons, and ASCA, and ASCA is the American School Counselor Association. And what they are doing is they are coaching and supporting our school counselors to create a comprehensive school counseling plan for each of our buildings. Not only is this work important to our counselors, but this comes to us from Substitute Senate Bill 5030, and it asks that our counselors create access to academic achievement, career development, and social emotional well-being that will lead to improved student outcomes for college and career readiness. Our counselors have completed two sessions of the six that they will be involved in. Two will be this year, the remaining four will happen next year, and so far, they have discussed implementing, excuse me, collecting, analyzing, and use of data for improved student outcomes. And speaking of data, the other two equity operational expectations are both five and six. Those ask us to identify and both remove barriers as we learn about them, and our work comes from the Youth Truth survey that we did. So students, staff, and families participated in the Youth Truth survey and they provided us with a ton of information. When I say ton, I'm going to give you the stats, but this is good. Having, having the information to work from to make sure that we can better support students based on what they're providing for us, and not only students, like I said, our students, our staff, and our families participated in this. Number wise, 18,735 students participated, 2,850 staff members participated, and 23,704 parent or guardians participated in our Youth Truth survey. And so we are beginning to look through that massive amount of data to look for ways in which we can better support each of those three groups that gave us input. And then finally, it's just a huge thank you to our community, all of them. We had, we successfully completed 18 listening sessions, some virtual and some in person, to get input on our draft strategic plan. Education Northwest is now analyzing the data from both our adult survey and our student survey. We had over 6,000 students who, to participate in that, and we will reconvene as a strategic planning committee on May 5th to make sure we incorporate the input that we got from our community into the strategic plan in hopes that we can put a proposal for you all together before the year's over and that you hopefully approve it. That is all of my updates. Any questions?
I just want to commend everyone that's worked so hard. Never have we had this much input from community members and students and just parents, the business community. I mean, it's been coming from every angle out there and, you know, if we're going to move this system forward and our strategic plan has to reflect the community and what their goals are for our kids, and so I really appreciate everybody who participated. Those numbers are, they're pretty awe-inspiring, actually, so I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into making this happen and I think it's a testimony to what we believe about our community and that we have to be partners and that's a good thing.
So that's a, that's an 80% response rate for Youth Truth from students?
Roughly, I don't want to, don't get me to saying percentages and stuff.
Yeah, sorry about that. 79.9145, never mind. That is, that is a really good dataset.
It is.
I, you started talking about it and the question that I had is that I knew there were a few who were opting out out of a fear that it was not the thing it claimed, and I would have expected a lower outcome based on all of that fear, but I'm glad we have it, I'm glad we have that data.
People want to be heard.
Yeah, I know, that, that's true, especially students. You give them away and they'll tell you.
Absolutely.
It was also heavily sent out by-
It was also heavily sent out by the principals.
I have experience with that.
Heavily. Three kids, three schools, yes. It was heavily sent out.
That's good.
And just sharing, not just, you know, pushing it, but sharing the importance of it and, you know, asking and continuously asking to, for people to fill it out. So I appreciated their due diligence in getting it done.
I've got a lot of good data to work with. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Will the data be made available to the public to see out?
For Youth Truth?
Yes.
We have, we actually are meeting about that very soon. This is our first go at Youth Truth, and we have quite a bit of reports and data to have, but it, yes, we just got to get it into a user-friendly presentation, but yes. And we plan to, whatever we are sharing, we definitely plan to use to inform what we are going to do. So absolutely.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Clarissa.
Thank you.
Okay, Craig, it's your turn now. Sorry about that.
He's a newsman. He's used to working on the fly.
Thank you for your time, as always. I have the privilege to talk about all the good work that our students and staff are doing. We led with an event that we had right here. We've been really lucky to have some wonderful performances from our students. This is Union, I think, at the last board meeting, but they've kind of melted together. I wanted to start, we've already praised ReedCon a few times. Oh, actually, in a different order because this went first. Okay. This was at Riverview Elementary School. This was really cool. This is a parent, Paula Staten, and her, she got help, she used quotes for help, from her second grader, Oliver, and her kindergartner, Harlow. She built this lending library at Riverview by herself and with her children, and then donated it to the school, and they're really enjoying it. There's games and books, and I just think it's a fantastic thing to see a parent kind of volunteer that time, and I asked her to build me one. She said no. Emerald Elementary School had this really amazing event. It was the first time ever. They called it the Wax Museum Night, very creative. So their students, they researched and then wrote biographies about people that have made a real difference in the world. And then the wax museum part was, then they then came on this night and dressed like the people in which they did the biographies on, and then stood really still for pictures. Scoot down here. So don't worry, this is not a safety problem, so Kyle, you can settle. This is at Ellsworth, and the Ellsworth Panthers, they can earn Panther tickets for being responsible, safe, and kind. And the students earned enough tickets that their principal, Alex Shiwi, got, yeah, he got taped to the wall. I'm not sure who chose this, and I will say I'm not sure how Alex got down, but I do know he was at school this week. So just a really creative way to get your students to participate in best practices. And I think that very few people would do this other than Alex Shiwi, but that was very cool.
I actually have a picture of Don Harris and Alex Shiwi taped to walls.
There you go. Okay.
This has happened before.
And then here's ReedCon. I know we've talked how Paul Warner was here. This is really an amazing event, and I do want to say that there were, it wasn't just having as true-to-life Star Wars characters as you can and can and having pictures taken. This was also a book fair, which students took part. And then they did a Lego contest, and you could see from these pictures, I was just blown away by what these kids could do with Legos and how much time and planning and engineering that has to go into this. It's just a wonderful event, and I was glad to be there and watch the line outside the door for this. So that was fantastic. And I wanted to share that, you know, we have great community partners, including Seize the Bagel that puts up our artwork from our schools all the time, and this is the latest one. Art Discovery worked with Seize the Bagel, and they're displaying art from Pioneer, which is really beautiful. And then finally, this story, it's a story that kind of keeps going. At Hawaii East Middle School, Joe Boken's classes for the last few years have built mini boats, and these mini boats are designed with the goal in mind for them to launch off the coast of Oregon or Washington and make it to the other side of the Pacific. None have actually done it yet, but they track it as it goes. They have tracking devices in there. And then they have partners in Japan. Just a wonderful program. But this boat, Neptune, it was lost. They could see that there was, the battery was dying, but the locator was no longer working, so they thought they lost the Neptune. And then as luck would have it, this man right here, Brad Brucker, who is from Oregon, was in Hawaii on a fishing boat, and they said, oh, there's some junk in the water. Let's go see what it is. And it was not junk, it was the Neptune. And they got in touch with Joe Boken, and Brad Brucker described it as something like he, it was like they discovered the, you know, the moon for the first time. That's how excited Mr. Boken was. And then he got to tell their students that the Neptune was found. And then they tried to figure out, they had tried to track to see where they thought it would be, and they did not think it was going to be Hawaii. So the students went back, and they're now trying to figure out, okay, what did we do wrong with our calculations for, to find, to think that the boat went in a different direction? So this was great, and this is a story that local media has done continuously, and this story was picked up by newspapers and television. So it was really, it's a fun story that continues to have, when they move on to the next grade, and then they, you know, they get to find out where their boat is when it gets, when it gets discovered.
What an awesome way to problem solve and to really have critical thinking.
Yeah, and this program also has things like government, people that were government relations, so that they had a team that needed to put together letters in different languages and to let government agencies know when they were launching and what the goal was. And then on the boat itself, there's messages that they got translated as well, just with the thought of where the boats might end up.
I love that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Craig.
Can I add something to that? There's another evergreen connection to that boat. Rini Hatakyama, who taught here for many years, and moved her family back down to Hawaii, is at her, to Boyd's School. The guy that, where Boken's.
They gave it to a partner school, basically.
Yay. Oh, that's cool. That's awesome.
And that, one of our, one of our former teachers is connected to that school?
Yes.
That's pretty amazing.
Small world.
Really.
Really amazing.
Small, small world.
Okay, next, we're going to do our budget update, and Superintendent Boyd is going to go ahead and present that for us.
Well, so this is, the purpose of this report is to discuss the planning that we've been doing related to our enrollment loss and budget reductions associated with our enrollment loss, and then also associated with if a double levy failure should occur. And as you know, we've been doing a lot of planning to be able to imagine those reductions, and the purpose of this is to share that information of what we've come to. So I'm going to share both budget reduction plans for the enrollment decline. I'm going to share also, talk about that enrollment decline, what the fiscal impact is for that, and then I'm also going to share reductions should the levy fail on April 26th. I'll also share what we've been doing related to our outreach to help inform our community about, about the levy and the levy loss and the budget reductions associated with that. And the bullets down below are just reminders of the kinds of programs that are levy funds that are directly, will be directly impacted by a, should the levy fail a second time. As you know, we can only go out for a levy twice in a calendar year, so that makes the next opportunity not until the following year. It's teaching staff, health and safety, performing arts, athletic activities, and educational programs. I want to discuss the way that we got to the budget reduction, the considerations we used to get to the plans that I'm going to share with you in a moment. And so you all know, we have collective bargaining agreements, we have to reach certain contractual agreements. We have compliance issues with the funding, and OSPI requires that we follow certain processes, procedures, regulations, and so forth. It also, it's also important to note that the scenarios or the plans that I'm going to share with you are directly, the second budget reduction scenario for a double levy failure is directly also related to what the levy dollars actually fund. We had to keep that into consideration. We had to keep the consideration of our collective bargaining agreements, our compliance issues, what the levy dollars fund. We also put our strategic planning in front of our leaders, as well as we did an activity with them to determine the highest priority functions that we have in the district. So instead of getting our principals, assistant principals, and our directors and cabinet in a room and saying, what should we cut? We said, what should we preserve? What's important? It's reverse engineering the problem to determine what's first important that we need to preserve to support our students from pandemic to recovery. And some, that was really important information as we puzzled through the different, the two different plans that we have prospectively here for you. Also want to remind folks that the levy accounts for 11% of our budget, and it also, we also get approximately next year, seven, between $7 and $8 million for levy equalization assistance from the state of Washington. That's nothing, that's something our taxpayers don't provide for us. That's something the state provides us for us because we have lower assessed values than is on the average. And it's important to note that from 2016 to 17 until the current time, our enrollment has dropped from 26,482 students to 22,960. For the 21-22 school year, the basic ed allocation for each student was 91-39. And so to put that in perspective, the enrollment drop and the, and what's provided through apportionment, the decrease is a funding of almost $7 million for 21-22, and it's based on a drop of 762 students. And the drop in basic ed funding from 19 to 20 is, and 20-21 was approximately 12.5 million. So the two-year total is around almost $20 million of funding that we have been reduced based on our enrollment loss. I put this slide up again because the next slides I'm going to show you are a direct result of the work that we did to really think hard about these considerations. I will tell you that these are people. These are incredibly gut-wrenching situations that when you put these up, you'll see people in them. It's hard, it's difficult. We made the decision to communicate this information out. As we started to have conversations with our staff, people were asking for more specific information. And I contacted our labor groups, and they felt like also sooner is better and appreciated the fact that we were being transparent and open and getting information out so people can consider that. It's not lost on me that we did a proclamation for our wonderful librarians, and on the page we also have some reductions in librarians. That's the kind of things that we're looking at here. These are $40 million worth of cuts between your enrollment loss and your double levy failure are significant, and you can't get to those large numbers with small cuts. It's significant, and it has to be a lot, and it has to be, all of these things that are up here were taken into consideration in that very difficult task of coming to these recommendations for you today. So for elementary, the reductions that we're recommending are reducing, this is, so first of all, this is, these are the reductions due to the enrollment decline. Again, we have enrollment decline and the double levy failure, if it should happen. It's also to remember, it hasn't failed yet, and so there's a possibility that the levy will pass, but given the size of our system, we have to do the work associated with this with 23,000 students, 4,400 staff members. We have to do the work in advance to meet our deadlines by the notification deadlines of staff for reductions in force, and that deadline is May 15th. So we have to backwards plan that from May 15 backward, and we are, we're doing that work now. Our human resources department is working overtime on weekends to also look at and develop two different plans. One is if the levy passes, and one is should the levy fail. And they have to do those two different calculations, so they're basically double the work so that on April 27th, we can begin the ground, hit the ground running on doing what is necessary according to the circumstances. Elementary, the reductions for the enrollment decline, and these mainly are reductions at least in the building level that are already in process. We're looking at these as rightsizing of our district for enrollment loss. Decisions were made to keep our staffing levels high during the pandemic. That makes sense. There was social distancing. There was great needs. We had to organize our classrooms and low classroom size ratios, and we had to add quarantine monitors. We had to add a lot of resources and able to just function in school. So the decisions, I think wisely, were made to maintain that level of staffing. We're at the point, though, now that we don't have the fund balance to provide any kind of flexibility for us to be able to continue those, so we have to right-size our district in order to meet our budget obligations. And that is reduction of 110 classroom teachers. I think 60 or so were at elementary. How many, Jennifer, at?
Twenty-two at middle school.
Twenty-two at middle school and 15 or so at high school.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so those principals have already gone out, and they've already notified those individuals, and they're in the process of having those conversations. Most of those reductions happen through our most, through provisional employees. So those provisional employees are first and second year employees, and in maybe some of our cases, third year employees. We're, the plan is to eliminate the quarantine monitors. Those are folks that were brought on to do quarantining and contact tracing and all of those things associated with the extra work due to the COVID pandemic. We're also planning a reduction of 14 central office positions and 46 paraeducator support personnel in a reduction of central office supplies and services. We're looking at, we're looking also at the double failure reductions. The previous reductions are happening and progress are going to happen now. These are the reductions that will happen should the levy fail for a second time. We'll be eliminating fifth grade band orchestra and music programs. We're reducing our associate principals to half-time in our elementary schools, a reduction of our teacher librarians to half-time in our elementary schools, eliminating the Excel pull-out program, that's three and a half people, a reduction of intervention specialists of 19, reduction of classroom paraeducator support. In addition to that, we'll be eliminating intramural programs in clubs, field trips, employee travel, and a reduction of school materials and supplies budgets. The first one, two, three, four, five, six are people, individuals, human beings. The rest are budget items that are paid for. I will remind you that 85% of our budget goes to staff. We are a human resources organization. Our power is in our people, and our people are who serve our kids, and so the majority of the, we can't reduce a $40 million budget without impacting human beings. In middle school, the plan is to eliminate deans of students, reduce classroom teachers, eliminate media specialists, those are the librarian support personnel, reduce classroom paraeducator support, eliminate athletic programs, that's a real tough, tough cut there, eliminate field trips, employee travel, and reduce materials and supply budgets. Again, a direct result of what the levy funds, the levy funds 100% of our athletic programs or thereabouts. And so that's a significant hit for our music and our athletics and all the extracurricular stuff for our students here. High school, we'll eliminate the dean of students, athletic directors, reduction of salary positions, eliminate media specialist paraeducators, reduce classroom paraeducator support, and reduce classroom teachers. I will tell you that our dean of student, one of the main things that came in to the top of our list when we talked to our principals was safety and security for our students. There was a real desire to have social, emotional sort, support for academic, behavioral, and emotional support for our students. Eliminating our dean of students, they also support our students in a safety and security. They also are instrumental in, at our ninth grade in providing help and support for our ninth grade success program. But those are functions that our assistant principals are going to have to take on should the double levy failure occur. And elimination of our athletic directors, secretary positions and those things that I already mentioned. We'll reduce athletic and fine arts programs. We won't have as many field trips and activities and extracurricular programs, fewer JV and C-team programs. And we'll eliminate field trips, employee travel, and reduce school materials, supplies, and budgets. And then student support district-wide. So those are the individuals that mainly work at the ASC. They support schools and teachers to be able to do all the things that help our students succeed and achieve. And so those are the positions that we're looking at in addition to the, in addition to the reductions that are going to happen just for the fact that our enrollment was reduced. So we'll reduce teachers on special assignment, reduce central office administrator program coordinators. We'll reduce central office classified position and eliminate employee travel, reduce supplies and service contracts. We've been going through with a fine-tooth comb, looking at all of our contracts to absolutely ensure that our contracts are necessary and not redundant. That's an exercise that I've done every year as a superintendent in other districts. I think it's an important thing to do routinely, and we'll have to go a little bit sharper on that here. I want to let folks know that we really tried to do a number of, in addition to the considerations that I put up before, we tried to make our reductions proportional for our paraeducators and classified staff, for our administrative staff, for our teaching staff, for our buildings and our district office. In terms of, we're just talking about double levy failure. In terms of the reductions in the percentages of people, our elementaries are reducing their staffing by 3%. Approximately, our middle schools are reducing by about 4%. Approximately, our high schools, about 4.5%. And our district office, 5% or more of our overall budget is being, or overall personnel is being reduced. So we wanted you to understand that proportionality is a consideration for us as well. So before I move on here, again, I just want to reiterate, our levy, you know, hasn't failed. We're still, we're still out there talking to people and informing them. And I want to talk to you in a moment about all of the efforts that we've done. And just to reiterate, these are gut-wrenching things. There is no good decision. These are not good decisions. None of these decisions are good. And this is what happens in the situation of a double levy failure. It's what's necessary to get to that number. And that number is big. And so we've done the best we can to take into consideration all of the things we discussed before, make it proportional. And we hope we've come to meet that mark in the best way possible for you. So on a positive note, we've been doing a lot. One of the things that we learned from our thought exchange when we conducted that was, we learned several things. One of them was that we needed to, people really didn't understand, one, weren't aware of the levy happening. Two, they didn't understand the specifics of it, the funding, what it is specifically, the, what it paid for, what it meant. And so we've really tried to get that information out through all of these mechanisms. One is that levy webpage, we've, our levy webpage has been there for folks to be able to go get that information. Our frequently asked questions document. We've pushed out information through social media in all of the different ways you see up there. We were able to push those straight out to our schools through Facebook pages. We have flyers in English, Spanish, Russian. To the right there, you see the replacement levy fax. That's a district mailer. We're able to send out one mailer. The rules are that you can send out one factual mailer, and it has to go to every single mailbox in your community. And so we've accomplished that by sending those out, those levy flyers. The communication and the media that we've done around this has been completely revamped according to what our community said they needed to know more about. And I'm really proud of our communications department and the work that we've done on that. Our principals have been really key communicators. They've done videos to explain what our levy is. Again, it's factual information provided to our community. They've reminded people to vote. We've done several, I've done a lot of messaging myself. We've done some videos. We did a sit-down with the soup. I actually did an English and a Spanish version. I got a little help on the side on the Spanish one. But I met a parent in, at a school yesterday, Marion, who saw it. And she told me about it and thanked me so much for doing that presentation in Spanish. So that tells me that we need to do more of that, you know. And that really meant a lot to her, so it meant a lot to me. We've done levy informational videos in all of the different ways. We've put things on our reader board. So the only thing we haven't done is dropped courier pigeon notes over every household. And we're working on, we're working on that part. So with that, that's my report. Any questions? I know it's sobering.
When it comes to the job reductions, how many of them will be offset by retirements and resignations?
They're working the details out of that. And I will tell you that on the enrollment scenario, the enrollment reduction scenario, more of those will be due to attrition and retirements and people leaving for other jobs and so forth. When we get to the double levy failure, it changes. And it gets into not just our provisional employees, meaning the people in their first three years, but it ends up potentially going deeper than that depending on what you teach and what your area is.
You talk about the reductions impacting those of our teachers who are on provisional contracts. Does that, does the fact of the provisional contract hide the years or decades of experience those teachers might have from out-of-state certificates?
No, provisional employee, folks that are from out-of-state, I'd have to defer to Jeanette, Janay on that. Can you come up and explain? I don't want to get this wrong.
Good evening. So the question was around?
Is whether or not a teacher on a provisional certificate who moved to Washington to teach loses all that experience if they've been teaching in another state for years or decades?
Not under the, under the provisional status, they would, if they come to us and having completed their provisional status in another school district, they have one year provisional with us. And so they wouldn't have been on a seniority list. So that's where they're considered the provisional. And then after that, moving into the continuing status is when we then consider other experience.
Continuinging status happens after normally one, two, three years?
Yeah, there's
Depends on the slot, isn't it?
Variety of scenarios, but yes, one year, two year, or three year.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the fact that we can, some of it can get lessened by the positions that'll open up due to retirements and resignations. But I always think about the number of staff that we won't have that support our students, especially like the intervention folks and the paraeducators. Right now, our kids need it more than ever. And so that's the part that's really the gut-wrenching. And then I think about all of the opportunities for students. That's the reason why we're all here, is to provide opportunities for our kids to participate. So it's like the whole child, the whole student. You know, the arts, the sports, all of the things that keep them engaged in being at school. It kills me that those are the things that we're going to have to possibly take away if we have that double levy failure.
Well, and I think, yeah, I agree with Julie. I mean, at this point in time, it's the worst possible time for our kids to be impacted by this. And anybody who thinks this doesn't impact kids doesn't understand education and understand our system. I mean, every single one of these cuts impact our students and not in a good way. And it's, it's very frustrating to, it's very frustrating to know that, and I agree with you, John, it's people. So it's the adults in our system who are employees here that are citizens in our community, who have mortgages, who pay taxes also, who are part of our greater community, volunteers in our churches. I mean, they're, it's a lot of people. And then it's our kids. So it's not just this simple, I think a lot of people just think of it as a budget. It's more than a budget. That budget means something. And so I just feel really frustrated that, and I'm saying this just to myself, as well as to, you know, anyone, that the first time around, we didn't do the job we needed to do to articulate that. But I think this time, we have been very thorough and have been out there. I mean, you and I and Rob and Julie, we were out, we've all been out walking, talking to, door-to-door, talking to people. And it's been very interesting, the kind of input that we get from people, and it's been mostly positive. And when it's not been positive, it's almost centered around people not understanding the facts or have been listening to misinformation. And so having that ability to be able to face-to-face talk to somebody with the facts has been really good, and I think it's been good for us. So I just, this is, this is gut-wrenching stuff.
Agreed.
Right here. And I've been on the board for a long time, as everybody knows. I've said it a million times. And I've never seen such a dire situation for our kids, ever.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next on the agenda is the comments by the school board.
Already made mine.
All right, Vic's already made hers. Julie, you have none?
I already, I already made my comment.
I think that just
Not on the budget, though, actual school board comments? Okay.
Did you want to talk about that calculation that you were figuring out that talks about what the, have you got, are you ready for that?
I, yeah, I sent the email out.
I was impressed by that.
It's a little piece of software, web, webpage that I put together describes what happens when property values change with respect to the levy ask. Is that something that you'd like to see on the screen? It might take me a minute or two to, or I'll just show you afterwards. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
But the idea behind that page is that, you know, Jennifer and her folks have predicted that property values will increase in a certain amount. And that is usually an OSPI estimate of property values, combined with the county's assessments and so forth. So they can predict with a range of accuracy how property values have changed and will change or may change. But if it's more or less, the thing that happens to the tax rate, if it's more property value, is that all other things being equal, the rate goes down. The ballot is a fixed dollar amount. We're asking for a levy of a fixed dollar amount in each year. And the adjustments upward turned out to amount to, on an average-priced home or an average-priced property in the district, that will include the commercial properties and the industrial properties. The tax is a certain amount. It's hundreds of dollars. And the increase year-over-year is about five bucks for each of these properties, on average. So if you're paying $800 in levy taxes for the enrichment stuff, next year would be 805. The following year would be estimated to be, you know, it's a month. Divide 800 by 12. Each month would be another five. That's less than a venti. And I agree, we've been much clearer this time around at how much impact that actually has for a homeowner for a tax that is not a new tax. It's just a continuation and adjustment for the inflationary forces that are present on our system. But yeah, I can show you the webpage later on.
Because I, I do think that has been one of the biggest misconceptions is that if our property values go up, because obviously we're in a time of increases in our assessments, that we're just, if it just suddenly jumps up even more, that the amount of money we get is going to be more, and that is not true. We get a finite amount of money that is already listed on the levy.
And we're aware of new construction. We're aware of new commercial construction, light industrial construction, which will increase, and residential. Every time you add value by improving a property, the share that an individual homeowner has to supply for this levy goes down. So the rate could go down even if the property values don't change because we're adding new property. I think that was part of the dynamic that we had in the early 2000s and 2010s that helped keep tax rates pretty low.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Okay, future agenda items? No, I think we have enough on that. Any future agenda items? Okay. Going to citizen comment. Any citizen wishing to address the board about an item not on the agenda or the meeting's agenda may do so during this time. As long as the comments are not personnel-related or about an individual employee or student and are not legal in nature. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. Please adhere to that timing. We have a long list of citizen comments tonight. You will see your time on the board in front of you. The comments need to be directed to the board of directors as a whole and may not address to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. When you approach the podium, please state your name and your affiliation to the district. To start off our comments tonight, I'm going to go ahead and call Rebecca Bafus to the podium.
Hello. So I'm Rebecca Bafus, and I'm the executive assistant to the Evergreen School District Foundation. And I just quickly wanted to let you guys know about a program that I've been working on. We have been receiving these farm-to-fresh produce boxes every Tuesday that come in. And it's for our families that are in need or experiencing homelessness. We send them out, they get delivered to my house, actually. And they come in big pallets. Jenny Grunwald was able to see the lovely process that I have going on today. But they come in big pallets of 60. And then we have the FCRCs, they come and pick up, and also all of the pantries that are in the middle in the high school. And I just kind of wanted to quickly show you guys a little bit of what's in them. There's like different types of salads. Each week is a little bit different of the food that comes. We have apples, there's sour cream, carrots, rice. So just a lot of the basic food things, but it is a big blessing to, to our families. And then this week, the company that I work with, it's called FMS Global Strategies. They're actually out of Seattle, but he did send me a bunch of extra boxes. So there's boxes right outside if anybody would like to take one or also if you know of somebody maybe that's in need that you would like to share with.
Because Rebecca still has 120 in her driveway.
Yes, yes. So feel free to pass them out and get them out into the community. Yes, yes. So feel free to pass them out and get them out into the community. And then also thank you all for volunteering and all that you do for our district. I'm thankful. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, next on the list is Lola Bozovich. Sorry, I...
You nailed it.
Thank you. I have a really complicated last name, and I still can't seem to get other people's last names right.
It's all right. Thank you. Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Lola Bozovich, and I am a parent of children in the Evergreen School District. And today, I'm really here to talk about culturally responsive teaching and the efforts of our diversity, equity, and inclusion team. So here I go. So I'm here to speak today as a mother, a white woman, the first generation on both sides of my family to be born in America. I am the daughter of immigrants and the mother of black sons that have attended various schools in the Evergreen School District for the last 18 years and counting. I am a taxpayer. Two of my sons are current students, one a seventh grader at Pacific Middle School, and the other, a senior at Union High School, who will be heading to Eastern Washington University in the fall to major in communications and play football for the Eagles. And I just want to take a side note to thank the amazing teachers at Burton, Pacific, and Union that my son wouldn't have made it that far without their support. So I just had to pause there and do a shout-out. I understand, though, that there is a concern in this community about how our budgets are spent, the current levy, and the focus on our curriculum specifically related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I saw the billboard in response to the current levy and the concern regarding math scores, CRT, and gender. As a parent, I am disappointed, but I am not surprised. I can tell you, I don't lose sleep at night worrying about how my children succeed or fail when it comes to statewide assessments. When they have struggled, there have been resources available in this school district to support them with measured results and success. And when my children succeed, they have been celebrated. What keeps me awake at night is whether or not my children are welcome in our community and in our schools, thinking about the children that have harassed my sons and called them the N-word and threatened them with physical violence, and how my children have taken it with grace and empathy, yet they weren't given the same. How would you respond as a parent? And what would you hope our schools do to help prevent these situations? Success is so much more than a test score, and it is measured throughout a lifetime of accomplishment, achievement, and reflection, not just through an annual statewide assessment. I can tell you, I'm a proud member of this community with a successful career. I couldn't tell you what any of my test scores were during elementary, middle, or high school. So this argument doesn't win with me. How do you prepare children and teachers to address these situations, or better yet, prevent them? It is through knowledge, awareness, and empathy that culturally responsive teaching provides. And I'll share a side note, because for me, it was really important when my youngest son, who, when he was around eight at the time, responded, when he was asked how it made him feel when a child referred to him as the N-word, and it happened more than once with the same child. And his response was, maybe he just didn't have a good home life. That's the empathy. I also understand that there are individuals in our community that believe culturally responsive teaching takes away from our student experience. In a district where almost 50% of our students identify as something other than white, and an additional percentage of the student population, although identify as white, are non-native English speakers, culturally responsive teaching prepares our teachers to have inclusive conversations and helps our students feel, how am I doing for time, like they belong. The focus is on academic success, instructional practices, curriculum, disciplinary practices, school board policy, hiring practices within our district, and community engagement. Culturally responsive learning is our student experience. It's not uncommon knowledge that as a nation, we're not comfortable with learning how to and teaching how to talk about race and cultural differences in a respectful way. Our children need a place where they feel all are welcome to the table. They need to learn how to navigate the world as it exists, and it begins in our classrooms. Children that feel emotionally supported and learn empathy early on have a much broader understanding of the world in which we live and have more opportunities for success. Think about your own experience as an adult, your place of work, the things you don't like, the things you do, the decisions that are made, the people you have to learn to work with. The earlier you learn how to navigate and partner with people that aren't just like you, who don't show the same ideas as you, the sooner your doors open to more opportunity. It is the process in which we self-reflect and learn who we are as individuals, how we support fellow educators, and more importantly, our students. To think that we don't see color, or to believe someone else's experience isn't important, is ignorant and not a community in which I want my children to grow.
Lola, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we have actually gone over the three minutes.
Okay. And I am actually going to wrap it up and just say, you know, it's important for our next generation to be successful community members, and a community that recognizes and embraces both its similarities and its differences. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list is Mark Gassaway, and he's actually going to give his comments via virtual. No? Mark, are you here in the audience? Okay, we will go on to the next. Next on the list is Julie Apple. Julie Apple? Julia? Oh, Julia? No? You have her remarks, Kristy? Oh, I don't know that we can do that. We actually... Do you have time, because you are on the list as well, Kristy? Do you want to add some? Okay. She can, if, we can just get it sent to us directly? Or if she can get online, then we can circle back?
If she does get online, can we hear her at that time?
Yeah, we'll circle back.
Yeah.
Okay, next on the list is Amberlin Lane. Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm Amberlin Lane. I'm here today as a parent of three children in the district, one at Elementary Furcrest, one at Cascade Middle School, and one at Evergreen High School. I'm also a music teacher at Burnt Bridge Creek Elementary. I want to start by saying thank you so much, Superintendent Boyd, for your transparency and your communication in what the budget reductions will be. I know for all of us, it's really hard to look at that information, but the fact that you communicated so clearly to us is appreciated. I would like to speak to the levy reduction. As a parent, even though I'm a music teacher, my two older boys didn't really show that much interest in music, to my heartbreak. I did not force it on them. But when they got to fifth grade, we encouraged them to try out band or orchestra. It was the perfect time to just give it a try. There was nothing to lose. And both of my children fell in love with music in fifth grade. Had they not had that fifth-grade experience, they probably would not have signed up for a year-long elective of music when they got to middle school. But because of that fifth-grade experience, they did. And now my high school, my high school son, his son, has forecasted to do choir and band and percussion next year, let alone jazz band, and every single music opportunity that he can. All of his friends that he goes and hangs out with are friends that he's made through music. So because fifth-grade experience is not a given, that experience, my children's love of music cannot be attributed to me. It's to this school district and our levy taxpayers. And I want my son that's in third grade now to have that same opportunity, whether it's sports or whether it's music. Every child in our district deserves that. When I see my own fifth-grade students go to their band or orchestra class, they are skipping their way there. They love it. So thank you to the taxpayers who have paid levies in the past. And I really, really hope this levy passes this time. I really want my child, who has almost his whole school experience, to go, to have every experience that his older brother had. And then when it comes to cost, I just want to say to the community that these costs will cost more than what they'll save in taxes, if they have to pay for private lessons, or join private athletics, or get their son a tutor, or counseling. It costs less to pay the taxes through the school. So thank you for putting this levy forward for a second chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Amberlin. Okay. All right, we're actually going to go ahead and circle back to Julia, is it Julia or Julie? Julie Apple, who is online, joining us.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Julia Apple. I teach special education at Hartford Elementary. I've been teaching in this district for about 18 years, and I would like to talk with you about how important it is to our students in special education that we pass this levy. I think we can all agree that every single human being on this planet deserves the opportunity to learn new things. Students who get special education services have been identified as having obstacles to learning new things. This means that they're not able to learn like their peers without extra adult help. Our job as special education teachers, interventionists, paraeducators, and other support staff in special education is to remove or lessen those barriers so our students can learn. Maybe the student can't move their arms or hands very well, so someone needs to hold a book so they can read it. Maybe the student has a hearing loss, so someone needs to interpret what people are saying into American Sign Language. Maybe the student understands directions best if someone shows them a picture instead of just telling them. Or maybe they have heard, have a hard time staying calm when they're frustrated, and an adult needs to remind them what to do in that moment. If our students have someone to do these things with them, to help them get around the barriers that are in their way, they're more likely to be able to learn new things. On the flip side, if there is no adult there to provide these supports, no one there to remove or help the student remove the obstacles, then our students have a very difficult time accessing new information. If this levy fails, there will be huge cuts to special education staffing in our district, and our students, who deserve to learn like everyone does, will be the ones who suffer the most. I am asking you, as someone with direct knowledge of the impact of this levy on students in special education, that you please vote yes and pass this levy so that all our students have the opportunity to learn. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you circling back to me.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, next on the list is Gary Wilson.
Thank you. I have a little handout here. I've been handing it out to people. I'm just going to read it. It's got the graph of the OSPI website, the report card for Evergreen School District students. And it says here, let's see, "Consider these success and failure rates as our current levy's operating results. Far less than half of ESD students passed or met standards, with three out of five failing to meet English and four out of five failing to meet math standards. More class time is needed on academics and less on social engineering lessons, causing, among other things, gender confusion. Until refocusing back on the basics, no more money is warranted. Property values have increased 11% since last year, so has our taxes inflation. The same levy rate will collect 25 million more in funding than the previous levy. Where is the excess funds being spent? Enrollment, as you've noticed, is down, dropped 4,000 students, about 16% since the last levy, yet still you want more money. Parents should demand a better education for their children before giving our school district more dollars." I've been here 11 of the last, well, 12 of the last 13 school board meetings. I've spoken out on this and other issues in the past, and basically, no response. Really, we're sending our kids here to learn math, English, science, and, you know, that's not happening at anywhere near a decent rate. As I mentioned last, or a few times, CAMIS is like double our statistics, our percentages. Why? You know, what teachers are not doing the job? You know, what students are not passing these, making these standards? So do a, you know, schematic on that. Find out where these, the last two years, who were their math teachers? Who were their English teachers of the ones failing to meet these standards? And see if there's, that shows like, okay, these teachers are not doing the job. And there has to be consequences there. It's, you know, just because this is run by the state, you know, it's taxes, there's still, you know, you need to do a good job, and it's not happening. These are not numbers I'm making up. These are your numbers from your website, your state website. So, yeah, I wrote a majority of that sign. I didn't want to include the CRT. Someone else mentioned that. I know CRT is not technically being taught, but I know the teachers have been trained in it, and I know it's coming. And I know culturally responsive practices and diversity, equity, and inclusion, it's going to be paving the way for it. You know, so anyway, I just, the worst thing is the gender stuff. I mean, no child should question their gender, and I won't send my daughter to the classroom ever again, because based on the teacher, that could become an issue. They could be having them question their gender, having them choose their pronouns. I mean, sorry, that's not what our school system is for. If you think it is, well, we'll vote down your levy. Thank you.
I'd like to ask a clarifying question, Gary, if I could.
Sure.
You mentioned social engineering leading to gender confusion. Do you know of any examples in our 36 schools of that going on that you could bring to our attention?
Well, I know it's occurring. I know it's, you know, children are questioning their gender more and more. I mean, last week, in my church, a fourth grader, we gave her a little, it was a little cross, and it had like a blue and a pink squiggly, like pastel color on the side of it. And she said, oh, my transgender friend's going to love this. She's a boy. And frankly, I, I mean...
So that was an instance at church?
No, that was, I mean, this is her school friend. This isn't a church friend. This is a school friend. It's not a church friend.
I guess, I guess my plea is that if you do find specifics, that you bring it to our attention.
Okay, I will find out. I'll see, you know, it's kind of a touchy subject. Alls I said to the girl was, he thinks, or she thinks she's a boy. God made them male and female. I just said it respectfully, nicely, you know, but thanks.
Thank you. Next on the list is Rika Strong.
Hi, y'all. My name is Rika Strong, a proud parent of six children in the Evergreen Public Schools system. We got two left that we're trying to get out of our house. I'm glad critical race theory didn't come up, because I was coming to let people know that is absolutely not what is being taught in this school district, a little bit familiar with curriculum. And I'm the last, in the last term of my PhD, looking at thousands of theories, going through books that look like this, that explain what critical race theory, along with a ton of other theories, are. And what I'll say to that is, probably in the easiest terms, critical race theory is an ethical epistemology of a social construct leading to an emphatic movement. I doubt that Evergreen Public School District are teaching my senior, who's going to Notre Dame, is a scholar-athlete, these kinds of words and contexts, or my sophomore, or any other child. I don't think they're equipped to do it. So just want to get that off the table, that that is not the social engineering that is occurring here. And I don't know that even myself, being a PhD candidate, have the bandwidth to be able to explain to people what critical race theory. I doubt that we're teaching it to kindergartners and seniors. So let's take that off the table. What I will say, though, is, and the argument around gender, or the argument around critical race theory, is just as ridiculous as accusing the school district of teaching our students that the earth is flat. It's just not happening, okay? It's a theory, but a theory that is not taught. What I will say, though, is what is being taught in the district is humanity and empathy, and our students being able to show up as their whole self. And as you, Gary, mentioned, your daughter struggles with math, right? The programs that we have in place right now that would support her, or that the levy would support, is giving her additional supports that she needs, so that if she is struggling with math, she can have a 504, or her teacher can adapt their style to be able to support her learning needs. Or to listen to your concerns as a parent about what kind of curriculum about what kind of curriculum is being taught to my children. And having an actual committee of people that are willing to listen to and hear what's important to parents through surveys, and we heard 6,000 people participated in the survey, so that the district is actually carving out a unique learning experience for each of us and each of our families. If we don't pass this levies, those kinds of supports will not exist for our children. I had the opportunity to be principal for a day. When I showed up, there was a child who came to school in the pouring rain without a coat and with sandals on. And I thought to myself, how could this first grader actually learn in school soaking wet? And I talked to the principal about it, and she said, we have this fund that's called the principals' fund. And so they're able to write a check for that child to get a coat or for that child to be able to get shoes. No levy, no principals' funds. Rebecca came up here and talked about food packages that go to children in our community. 50% of kids in Evergreen Public Schools were not CAMHIS. CAMHIS school districts are funded well, and that's why they're able to have the success that they have. 50% of our kids live in poverty in this district. Those food boxes, those kinds of things would not occur if we didn't have resource officers in our district to pair parents with resources that they need to just feed their children or for basic needs. This is not an argument about critical race theory or gender. This is about humanity. And those of us, and I'll call on my Christian brothers and sisters, and you think about Christ-like principles? His principles are to take care of all and to take care of those who are hurting the worst. That's what this district is trying to carve out. And so, in closing, and I know my time is up, what I'll say is, this is not a debate about any of these ancillary things that people are throwing out there. This is about creating an educational structure that embraces and wraps around our children in this community and gives them a real, fair chance at life, regardless of identity, regardless of socioeconomic status, regardless of ability, or whatever they have to bring to the table. We're making sure that our children have the ability to leave this district whole, and it takes funding for us to be able to do that. And none of this other nonsense that people are throwing in the way. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Kristi Peek.
Hi, thank you, Kristi Peek. I'm a teacher librarian in the district, vice president of the Evergreen Education Association, and president-elect of that body. I'm speaking to you as a teacher, a union member, and a grandparent and parent of students that used to go to Evergreen schools. And I'd like to speak to you about the levy and what it means to the students, teachers, and staffs working with them. The last two years have been hard for everyone. Nothing has been normal. For adults aged 35 to 60, we spent 3% to 6% of our lives in relative isolation and pandemic chaos. We've had most of our lives to figure out how to deal with adversity and adapt to difficult and unpredictable conditions. Our oldest students at 17 have spent 12% of their lives struggling with the conditions of pandemic. And our five-year-olds, this pandemic has been 40% of their lives, while they're still figuring out how to learn, make friends, problem-solve, and just be a human being on this planet. I'm hearing about basics. I think empathy and humanity are basics. And I think we need more. If it were only the pandemic alone, this would be a heavy burden. But it's more than that. They have lives too, that existed pre-pandemic, with all the usual bumps and challenges, and in too many cases, the exceptional trauma that was a part of their life to begin with. School is not, school is usual. We are unmasked, and we're ready to start regaining a sense of normalcy. But recovering from the pandemic is not as easy as taking off our masks. Our students are coming to school, carrying with them not only the effects of not socializing with friends and peers and struggling with online learning and the stress of the pandemic, but also the burdens they carried before. We need more counselors, more paraeducator support, more behavior coaches, more caring adults in classrooms and schools to wrap around and support these kids. We need more adults to have eyes on students, to notice when a student is in need. They don't wear signs, and they don't always, or even often, ask in traditional ways for help. They act for help. They shut down, they act out, they seek or create conflict. And those are the externalizer kids. Our internalizer kids need our eyes on them. They become depressed, anxious, and disengaged. We need more activities and enrichment to backfill what they've missed out on. This is not the time for cutting programs that exists to meet the needs of students. We need more arts and music outlets for students. Teachers are struggling under a workload that's indescribably heavy. They carry the emotional needs and burdens of students along with the standards they have to teach. If you want to know what a smaller class size means for kids, go and talk to the teachers of the smaller classes, like the first grades at Mill Plain. Or better yet, go spend a half a day with them, and then visit the same grade level at a school where the numbers are closer to the max. And then tell me which class you want your first-grade child or grandchild in. Community members, I implore you to pass this levy. Whatever thoughts you might have about mistakes the school board has made or decisions you disagree with, taking programs and supports from students when they need it most is not the answer. School board, I implore you to make any cuts as far from direct contact with students as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Excuse me. Okay, we're actually going to go back and hear from Mark Gassoay. Is he online now? Mark, are you there? Mark?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Great, thank you. So I had a business meeting with an associate this last week. His name's Levi, and our conversation went something like this. Levi, how is business going? Well, Mark, it's going okay. I suppose you can say we're in the middle of the pack. Just okay, huh? So what is it you wanted to talk about today? Well, Mark, I want to talk about, I want more money from investors. Levi, investors are already giving you $37 million a year. How much more do you want? Mark, I want $5.9 million next year and $25 million over the next three years. Levi, that's a lot of money. Is your business growing? No, Mark. In fact, I have 4,000 fewer students than I did just two years ago. You have fewer clients, but you want more money. What is it for? Are you increasing services? No, Mark. In fact, I intend to keep the same ratio of service providers to clients. But you are asking for more money, Levi. I don't understand. I want to see your business plan. What will you spend this money on? That's just it, Mark. I don't know how much money I need, but I still want more money. Levi, I would suggest you stick with the $37 million. Asking for more money just doesn't make sense. Mark, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to ask for more, and if the investors don't give me, give it to me, I can always come back and ask for a lower amount. Levi, that sounds pretty risky to me. That's not how organizations usually work. I can't support giving you more money without a plan. Not even a credit union would do that. I'm going to advise the investors against your proposal. This conversation may sound fantastical, but this is exactly what the Evergreen School Board is asking of taxpayers. I challenge the school board and the superintendent to be honest with taxpayers. Tell them you're asking for $25 million more dollars over the next three years. Tell them you have 4,000 fewer students and intend to reduce service providers accordingly. Tell them you do not have an EPO budget for the next three years, and you do not really know how much money you need. I'm really disappointed in how this communication has happened with the public, and I challenge you to be upcoming and honest with taxpayers in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next on the list is Bill Bevel.
Good evening. I'm Bill Bevel, address on file. I'm a fifth-grade teacher. Right now, I'm on release to be a union president, and I've been doing that, and I'm ready to go back. I get to go back next year. And so this is definitely my experience of what happens with this levy. And I just kind of made a bullet list. As you know, I'm a pragmatist. It's like, I really want to know bang for buck, what are we getting out of this? And honestly, I have to say to you and to the community, this is the most kid-first money that we have in the budget. Everything in the levy is almost directly to kids. Just the concept that we would be giving up $7 million of levy equalization that the state's willing to give us to help support our students doesn't make much sense for me for us to make ourselves ineligible for that. Julia did a much better job of talking about sped supports, but that's a good part of my job, is talking to sped teachers and to schools about how sped students' needs are being met. But the concept of cutting, the things that really make school great, music, choir, band, clubs, athletics, to us, it may seem like those things are extra. But to some kids, that's the only thing keeping them coming back to school. And if we lose kids because they drop out or they're not interested or they disengage, those kids aren't coming back either. And that will make it even more difficult for us to reach, be able to fund our budget in the future. One of the things I think that's most alarming about this is the ability to disregard reality. We are in a teacher shortage. Not enough, I'm on the WSU Professional Educator Board, or Advisory Board. And I know there are less people going into teacher education programs right now. We are going into a crisis of not being able to staff all of the things that we'd like to teach our students that are required to teach our students. And so making cuts to teachers right now, while those teachers scramble to find other jobs, they may not come back. We may be hunting for another group of teachers that are less prepared and we haven't invested in. A lot of these teachers are teachers that we have, in Evergreen, already spent money to train, to get ready, to participate in equity and inclusion and all of those things that don't come just in a regular teacher preparation program. One of the other things is, is when a teacher from somewhere else asks you about the district, one of the first things they ask is, do you pass your levies? It is an identifier whether your district is successful or not. If you pass your levies, that is a vote from the community that you believe in the education of children in your community. And I had a couple other things, but it's also a bad idea to short us on bus drivers. We know there's a bus driver shortage. It'd be hard to find those. And I just think the ending thing, bang for buck, this is a great investment. This is a really great investment in the things that make our schools worth coming back to. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next on the list is Bryn, and I'm really going to try not to scamahorn. Awesome, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, as I make the long walk back. Yeah, neither of my names are easy. So I'm here as a community member without kids, but also as a teacher, a music teacher in the district. My big thing, I believe that strong schools build strong communities, period. And so I believe that also in educating students. I believe in educating them that we are fanning the flames and the interest and the curiosity of our future leaders, our doctors, our architects, our scientists. Yes, I'm also a music teacher. I also get some of that in there as well. And I also believe in the arts. I believe in training the mind that comes from an arts-forward curriculum. I believe that all of our future endeavors, those doctors, those architects, those, what we consider to be sometimes blue collar, all those white-collar, blue-collar workers can benefit from an arts-based education. My job affords me that unique position to be able to see how it can influence the thinking and the training of the brain as we move forward and progress in our educational balances. It also allows me to see how these non-basic classes, as they have sometimes been led us to be, can influence those students. If the replacement levy fails, music, arts, and our sports stand to have drastic cuts. The ramifications will be felt not just for a little bit, but for absolute years to come. These extraneous classes, and I'm including sports as a class because there are lessons that are learned on the basketball court, in the field, and everywhere else. These extraneous classes, as they have been called, this music, art, theater, sports, provide not only essential skills, such as dedication, perseverance, self-discipline, and long-range goal achievement, but also they provide a home. There are students whose entire driving focus is the band, the choir, the orchestra, the black box, the field where they will be. These subjects, they're gifted in the ability to discover who they are and who they will become. They have aided students to learn to look past themselves and what it means to be part of a group and to give and sacrifice to that group. They learn that the sum is greater than just them when they all work together. They are also the impetus to success, oftentimes acting as a catalyst to keep our students in school. They are the reason they wake up in the morning. They are the reason that they decided to raise their grade from an F to a C so that they could play in that game on Saturday night. For some of our students, they are the reason they wake up and open their eyes in the morning. When, if we choose to cut, we are losing a vital support for their success. For a segment of our student population, we are creating a no-win situation. There's a quote by George Bernard Shaw, who says, "You use a glass mirror to look at your face. You use works of art to see into your soul." We cannot take away the education of students that allows them to see their soul and to learn implicitly about themselves. I beg and plead, please pass this levy. It is what is best for us and for the future of our students and the future of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Peter Matsuzaki. Did I do that right? I'm so sorry. I need to, I just, I should just apologize and not even try. Okay. Well, I used to be Virginia Grunwald, so.
My middle name is Koloku Okumili. So every time I have to fill out applications or, you know, like new driver's licenses, Peter Koloku Okumili Matsuzaki. So, pretty long. Anyways, oh, you know, I was, I kind of wanted to keep what I wanted to talk about, just small and as non-political as I could, you know, just factual. But listening to all the teachers talk, you know, I was trying my best not to choke up, you know, especially, I know we're not supposed to direct stuff, but especially listening to Ms. Bradford, you know. You know, they're not even concerned about their jobs. They keep talking about how it's going to affect students. You know, they don't even care about that. That's about what they're going to do. And, you know, that's, I mean, excuse my language, but that's some heroic shit, you know? I mean, thank you. I just moved up here, you know. One of the things I liked when I moved up, why we came up here, me and my wife, was because, you know, Hawaii is kind of expensive. You know, it's like, you want to get a house. It's like a million, too. You know, we just sold my mom's house. It was termite eaten. Sold it for a million, too. You know, moved up here. Because when we looked at places to move, you know, Vancouver was really welcoming and nice. When we came up here to visit, everybody was so nice, you know? And it's cold. It's a lot colder than Hawaii. But, you know, this was the coldest I've ever been. I've lived in Hawaii all my life. So when I saw the snow, it was, it was cool. I built my first snowman here, the first snow angel. I built my first snowman here, the first snow angel, but, you know, what you guys have here is community, you know? I mean, listening to everybody talk, you know, what you call, people that have that spiritual power in them when they talk, and you feel it, we call that mana. And I see a lot of you guys have that, so I appreciate it. You know, even the people that I disagree with, you know? It was nice, you know, they didn't scream or yell, they just left nicely. You know, I appreciate that. So even when people disagree, you know, they can leave nicely. So I just wanted to say that, but, you know, I have 30 seconds left, so the biggest thing I want to say was, you know, what attracted us to Evergreen was, you know, the force that you guys put into your school system. I mean, one thing I think people keep forgetting was, two years ago, you know, COVID hit, a lot of money got spent there. You know, people keep forgetting that. Took a lot of resources. And the teachers, the teachers, and all you guys, you guys had, you guys went through shots, risking your guys' lives, you know, that's heroic. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next is Phil Cronbush.
Yes, I'm Phil Cronbush. I'm a homeowner and my grandchildren also attend Evergreen School District. Basically, Rob Perkins asked Fielder a question to one of the teachers giving a presentation, I think, two board meetings ago, about math curriculum. And he noted, he asked a question about parental involvement in the curriculum selection. And basically, it was, he kind of, the person at the podium basically kind of went around and said, "Well, I don't know." And it was basically, I think, there's no involvement. So my question is, what, can you give us an update maybe on how that process has gotten better, that parents are involved in the curriculum selection, just not you alone?
We can have someone follow up with the answer to that. That actually was a presentation earlier on tonight.
Correct, right. Okay, thank you.
Next on the list is Jen Thielen.
Almost.
I've been sitting here looking at these names, trying in my head to say them properly.
That's okay. And I have to apologize, I went to a Mariners game this weekend, and we did a lot of yelling, and I lost my voice. And we're not even Mariners fans, so it was a really good time. We wore our Giants gear to the Mariners game, so. My name is Jen Thielen. I am a parent and employee of Evergreen Public Schools. And because I lost my voice, I wrote a letter that I'm going to read to you just to keep me on track. I'm sharing with you tonight because many believe that I hold a valuable perspective being both a parent and employee of Evergreen Public Schools, as well as a tax-paying citizen within our district. But beyond that, I also can offer an honest viewpoint as someone somewhat of a new member to this community. My family moved to Vancouver from the Big Island of Hawaii, pause, shout out, in, okay, where was I? In 2016. The biggest reason we sought this move was because we wanted more for our children's education. It was also helpful that my husband studies volcanoes, so something that Hawaii and Washington have plenty of. I investigated the area schools with diligence. We visited the area prior to our move, and I quite literally went around asking people, what school do we want to go to? What I was surprised by was that there were so many answers, so many schools that people raved about and loved. My realization was that within Evergreen School District, there were many, many, many very good schools. In January 2016, my son began first grade at Ilehi. Currently, we have a seventh grader at Chehala and daughters in third grade and kindergarten at Ilehi. After a 12-year hiatus to raise those babies, I returned to education this year as an instructional para in learning support at Ilehi. In the next few years, I plan to dive into full-time teaching when my kids stop taking so much of my time. We'll see. Growing children and students is my life's greatest work. Since 2016, I have seen the leaving of multiple superintendents, reorganizations of admin, and recently, the failure of a levy. These are big things, but yet the love, instruction, and connection my children have received has unwavered. My children have been met with so much grace and commitment, more than I could have ever hoped. However, as someone that is now on the ground every day working in the trenches, the latest dysfunction is unexplainable. Mostly because we don't have a hot second to try and figure it out, we are already feeling short-staffed and overwhelmed with all the excess need in a school year that's following a two-year pandemic. What I can explain, and I hope voters can understand, is that the upcoming replacement levy is crucial to our school's community and its success. This levy is about kids. It's about the staff that serves those kids. It's not about the high-level admin that maybe need to get it together, whatever it is. These are two separate issues, both very important and with very different solutions. I am in favor of resolution and restoration for both, but failing this levy does not make any progress for either side. We need this levy to pass so our students and staff have resources they need to keep going. It's crucial. It's okay to support our school communities by passing this levy, and it's also okay to be furious with the very district that's asking for it. Many of us are feeling that, but all of us want what is best for our students. On Friday afternoon, when these proposed budget cuts came out, it felt like a punch in the gut. Each line item is a person, a resource, a student, that will be offered less than they deserve. We have got to work on the unification of this district's administration, but failing this levy will not do that. So to our voters, I ask that you put the students in our district first by voting yes. Only they benefit and only they lose what's at stake. And to our district, I ask that you please get it together. Whatever it is, it's costing students valuable resources, and we can do better. We must do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the last citizen comment sign up. So I will go ahead and call at 7:27. We're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting where we will reconvene for Board Workshop, go over elementary boundary committee changes, proposals, instructional materials committee workshop, and legislative updates. Thank you all for joining us this evening.
All right, we're going to go ahead and get started with our Board Workshop. And first up is the elementary boundary committee changes proposal. Mr. Monroe.
Yeah, thank you, Ginny. Thank you, members of the Board and Superintendent Boyd. It's our pleasure, Bobby's in mind, to be here to give you a brief update as to the status thus far. And what you'll see at the top of the document that you have, and it's there on the screen, is Phase Three of the work. We elected because we know that, you know, for some folks, you know, this work is new to them in terms of the work that's occurring. So we put a little background up there with regard to how this work ties into the 2018 bond and the new school construction. And so Phase One and Phase Two of the work obviously have been completed previously, and they went into effect on the dates there that are listed. And we're in the midst of Phase Three now, and if all goes according to plan and per your, the Board's approval of the work as we move forward, these changes, or whatever changes are made, would go into effect in August of 2023. So the next section there, before I turn it over to Bobby for a part, is, I wanted to make sure that the Board is reminded of the timeline that we have published on our website with regard to what we've promised our community, and specifically, that if all goes according to the plan, we would be in a position to have not so much Bobby and I, but really the parents on the parent committee present the proposed changes to the school board either this June or this August, depending on what is the Board's pleasure. And so Bobby is going to come up and detail a little bit more about the current work for Phase Three, and also show the Board a couple of images that detail the current boundaries and what the possible proposed new ones that we would take out to the community would be. So I'll turn it over to Bobby.
Good evening. So current work, like Scott said, we're in Phase Three. We are working with Burton, Crestline, Endeavor, for Crest, Hearthwood, and Mill Plain. The schools that we've underlined are the schools that have had parent representation. Crestline and Mill Plain, we've worked hard with those schools, but we have not been successful in getting feedback. So we're working with our current parent team to figure out ways to get Crestline and Mill Plain parents involved as we move forward with this process in different ways. We've had seven meetings, and we've arrived at a recommendation to take out to our school communities for feedback. So if we look at what our zoning looks like right now, you, we're looking at Furcrest in the pink, and then we've got Hearthwood, we've got Endeavor, which Endeavor obviously is an interesting one. With the growth in Endeavor, you can see pink right in the smack middle of Endeavor, which, those are students that go to Furcrest because Endeavor is at capacity. And so we've also have Burton, which will be opening a new elementary school, either mid-year, next year, or the following year, depending on that open date. And then we've looked at Hearthwood, and Mill Plain, and Crestline. We've looked at those boundaries based on enrollment and space in those buildings. So with our proposed feedback and input from our parents, we have taken into considerations like safety, able to walk to and from their neighborhood, keeping the population, when it comes to socioeconomic and diversity intact as much as possible, impacting as few families as possible, removing patchwork quilt types of scenarios. So we had some guidance and norms that we followed with our, our parents. And so under those guidances, we came up with a proposal. And you can see real quickly, at Endeavor, obviously, we removed that pink section, which is now all Endeavor. And Furcrest, we have extended boundaries on this west side of 112th, which was currently Endeavor students moving into the Furcrest neighborhood, which is still all busing. So they busted Furcrest as opposed to busing to Endeavor. And you can see we've pushed, so that, so the patchwork, the pink in the middle of Endeavor has been removed. We've extended on the west side of 112th. We've pushed Burton into Endeavor boundaries. If we think about the location of the new Burton, which will be over in this area, so Burton will be picking up Endeavor students. We've extended Hearthwood a bit into Furcrest, and, which is a third move. And then if we look down between Crestline and Mill Plain, Mill Plain down here is going to be picking up Crestline students. So we've made four significant shifts in regards to family neighborhoods and shifting the boundaries. So again, just a quick snapshot, here's the before. You can look down at Crestline and Mill Plain and kind of see where Mill Plain is now going to be picking up some, a Parkcrest neighborhood in that area. So with that, in thinking about our demographics and our numbers and what the impact and when those numbers actually look like, Scott is going to speak to that.
Thank you, Bobby. So this chart here, and I realize that you can't see the bottom of it there, but I'll scroll up and then share a little bit of information. We just wanted to give the Board and Superintendent Boyd some information about the types of numbers that the parents ask for and kind of the educational process that we go through as we work with them. So you can see there the six schools in question that are listed, and of course, Burton and Mill Plain are the two that are being rebuilt, and that means that the capacity, student capacity for them in the new buildings is increased over the current ones. And so the first thing we did was, once we came up with those possible recommendations that Bobby went through, is you can see there for the total number of zone students, that simply shows for the parent committee and for you all, how many current elementary school students live in Burton's current attendance zone, and how many would live in the proposed new one. But it's important to note, of course, that, as you all know, we have a very active boundary exception process in our school district, and so all of the students who live in the Burton zone don't necessarily attend Burton, and all the students who do attend Burton don't necessarily live in that zone. They could live somewhere else as well. So the boundary exception process is a big part of this in terms of trying to get an approximation in terms of what the results of this will actually be. We had some initial targets there that you can see in terms of additions or subtractions to the current enrollment. It's also very important, as Bobby mentioned, and as the guiding principles that the Board has approved all three times that we've been through this phase. So you can see there that we've detailed for the parents based on their questions, what the possible additions or reductions would be to students on free and reduced lunch, how many students are currently served with some type of an IEP, and also a little bit about the most significant ethnicity breakdown in terms of student numbers. And then this last one down here, I'll scroll up a little bit. That is the plus 94 that you see for Burton and on through the line there. That is the best projection in terms of additions to current enrollment or subtractions that we can come up with, based largely on what we expect students and families who are currently on boundary exceptions to do. If we pop back to, you know, this map here that Bobby detailed before, when she spoke to that area right there on top of Endeavor that is currently zoned for Furcrest and that we are proposing to change, there are approximately 100 elementary students that currently live in apartments and condos and different things in that zone, and about 40 of them approximately already attend Endeavor on boundary exceptions. So if that were to change, as one example, for those 40 students, we're not really changing anything for them, they would still go to Endeavor, but they wouldn't need to be on a boundary exception after that. So we're actually, one could say, improving their situation. So you see there at the bottom of the chart what the projected pluses or minuses would be. And I guess the last thing I'd say for that in terms of, you know, just a holistic view, is that based on current enrollment, current projected enrollment for next year for these six schools, right now, there is a difference in projected enrollment of approximately 300 students between the smallest of those schools, Mill Plain, and the largest of those schools, Endeavor. If this proposal were to go all the way through the process and be approved, then that difference between the smallest and the largest would shrink to approximately 70 students amongst these six schools. So it's very much in keeping with the Board's directive to, you know, right-size our elementary schools through this process. What's different, of course, due to the enrollment decline, is that right-sizing is not necessarily in all cases now at the approximately 550-student mark that we came up with several years ago because of that enrollment decline that is there. And then lastly, before we get to our proposed timeline, which Bobby will cover, there's just a little detail there for each of those affected zones with regard to the number of students that we believe this proposal in total would affect. And so it's approximately 389 students, which is, you know, a lesser number of families, but that's the number of students that would be possibly affected by this, were these changes to go into effect. And I'll turn it back over to Bobby to talk about our proposed next steps.
So next steps would be to connect with our parent group and look at putting some community forums on the calendar for May. We want to do an in-person one at Furcrest and invite all of the impacted communities to Furcrest to have that conversation, and then also offer Zoom, English, and Spanish opportunities for our families and stakeholders. And then after that feedback, the parent committee presentation would present to the Board during a workshop in June, and then reading in August, and second reading August 23rd. So that is our proposed timeline and our plan at this point, and I guess we open this up to questions, maybe?
Yeah, so, and so you guys recall from part that was shared before, you know, this is the timeline that we suggest based on how we believe the work will proceed, you know, pending your approval. And if for some reason it was the wish of the Board or the superintendent that we waited until August to do the first reading and do it a little bit later, we've got the leeway in there for that. But we believe that we are ready, and the parents on the committee believe that they are ready, to engage in these community forums here next month, in the month of May, which would put us in a position to make any recommended, parent-recommended changes based on the feedback of the folks who attend. of the folks who attend those forums, either in person or virtual, and then present before you all on June 14th.
Oh, sorry, Rob.
Sorry, I forgot to defer to you. Go ahead.
Oh, I just have one question. When, when are these proposed boundary, it's going to go into effect? Next school year or the following school year?
The following.
Okay, okay, so I was like, that's a tight timeframe if it was for the school year, so.
No, our, our promise to the community, and it's published on our website, and it's consistent with the other two phases, is that it will be ideally a full year from approval to when they would go into effect. And it would be no less than eight months if for some reason it were to take until next December. But we believe we can come in under that and still be very thoughtful in the process.
It feels like a long time since we did the last round.
Right.
It's happened since then, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that, I, it all makes sense and.
So I want to read the chart as accurately as I can that you had on the previous page. You have before numbers in the total number of zone students, that's 377. You said that wasn't the actual enrollment at the school?
No, those, Rob, are, like in Burton's case, since that's the number you chose. If you were to go back to that map and capture only the current Burton attendance zone at the time that this work was done, it would show at that time that 377 elementary age students lived in that zone.
Okay.
And most of those, of course, would go to Burton because that is their neighborhood school and their home school. But some of them would go to other schools. And also, students from outside that zone also attend Burton, right?
Right.
So, so that was a first look for the parents on the committee that are new to that to capture, here's what it looks like in the zones, so that they could begin to understand the importance of doing the best we can to factor the boundary exception process into this because we have a very robust one.
Yeah, and I'm picking Burton to discuss because it's the leftmost one, is all. Do you, I can look this up if you don't, but do you have at the top of your head the current enrollment at Burton?
I do, as a matter of fact. Or if it's okay with you, we'll go with, since we're talking about work that would be approved at the end of this year to go into effect the year after, we always try to use the data closest to that if we can. And so the projected enrollment for Burton next year with its current attended zone is 341. And so we're proposing adding approximately 94 students to that, which would give it an enrollment of approximately 435.
Okay. Which, okay, yeah, I understand then. I understand what the chart means.
Okay.
Then the scheduling of the approval for these boundaries, that appears to include plenty of lead time for those families that apply for boundary exceptions to have the news so that they can make a plan and not miss the deadlines, right?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, hopefully about a year or a little bit more than that, just as occurred in the first phase. And then in the second phase, those of you who are on the board at the time will recall the, you know, the amount of time they had was a little bit less than that because we delayed the process until late summer. You know, really because we naively thought at the time, or I naively thought at the time, that if we waited a couple of months, we might be able to do in-person community forums because the pandemic would be over. It's not over, and it wasn't over then either, so we did everything virtually last time. And those were very well-attended in many cases, as some of you know from going to those. So moving forward, even though, you know, we are allowed to do in-person community forums now, we want to do that, as Bobby mentioned, but we're also going to continue with virtual ones and give parents choices with regard to that. And so our proposal is that we would do three forums total, two virtual and one in-person.
Any other questions? No? All right, thank you, guys.
Well, thank you. Okay.
That's the nod of yes.
Okay, thanks, everybody. We appreciate it.
Endeavors needed to be adjusted for a while.
Yes, all right, thank you. That's my stash. Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Instructional Materials Committee. Kimberly Miller and Crystal Wolf. You both?
No, I just have my notes. I have both, yeah. All right, greetings. I'm Crystal Wolf. I am the K-12 Science Tosa for the district, and I'm coming to you tonight to present three curriculum adoptions that are various AP science subjects. And I'm going to be starting with AP Biology. So as part of our, our AP Science program, again, these represent our highest level science courses for the district. And these are our rigorous courses where students, after a year of learning, take an AP exam in May, and that, that season is coming up. And all of our students are hard at work at reviewing for those exams currently. And if they pass that AP exam, of course, they have the opportunity to earn college credit. And so part of the requirements that College Board sets out for AP courses is that the instructional materials for science are, are up to date and current. And so there is a requirement that they are less than 10 years old and that all students and teachers have access to a college-level textbook. So with AP Biology, I convened a resource team because our digital subscription is expiring at the end of this year. And our digital subscriptions are six years long. And so renewing the current edition would put us past those requirements that are required by the College Board. And so the review committee consisted of a teacher from each of our high schools that has an AP Bio program, and that is five of our high schools. And so any, every high school except for Legacy has AP Biology. And we had a teacher from each building. And so they looked at a variety of textbooks, including the currently adopted textbook, which is the Campbell Biology. And at first, that was probably the text we were going to go with. But there was a new book out, Biology for the AP Course, by Bedford-Friedman and, long publishing company, Bedford-Friedman &amp; Worth. And one of the teachers in particular took a really close look at this brand-new textbook and said, you know, I think this is really worth our consideration. We have a strong philosophy that AP is for all in this district. And we want to make sure that our textbooks really do support engaging all of our learners who want to challenge themselves with, with a challenging science course. And so when we look at this textbook in particular, it really is tailored specifically to the, the course exam description for AP Biology. And it's really trimmed down with very good visuals and understandable text and very readable. And so as the teachers evaluated it using our Policy and Procedure 2020, with all the criteria there, the thing that really stood out was that this textbook really is going to support our students that, that are challenging themselves with this course. So just taking a quick look at, at kind of what it looks like. Some of the digital resources are still being developed, but the physical textbook, there's a copy here. And it follows the course exam description exactly from, from AP College Board. It has a lot of really great features that will support our students, including an online platform that has practice problems. It has interactive visuals. It has very, very specific learning targets. And so those are all features that our AP Science teachers found compelling. The organization and the structure in particular really supports students. And so that is the resource that the materials, the Resource Review Team unanimously decided would be the best. And we presented to the IMC, and now presenting to you. It is fully integrated with Canvas. It does also include an app that students can have on their personal devices should they want to access the online text with, when they're offline. It allows them to download and access that resource, the, the e-text, even without internet. So those are some other features that, that I wanted to highlight for you. Any questions about AP Biology and that process?
Nope.
Okay.
Maybe.
I will move on to my next adoption, which is.
Hold on, sorry, real quick.
Oh, sorry, we have to do your thing.
His mic was off. He wasn't fast enough.
Trying to keep the, my mic turned off so that people don't have to hear me chewing that. I was looking at the, I guess, the overall, I'm just struggling with my technology. The overall cost, but I saw the list price of like $124 for the paper textbook.
That is very typical. Actually, that is actually more affordable than our current texts.
That was my question, is that that price seemed lower than some of the others.
Yes, so these AP Science books, they are more expensive than most other textbooks because of that college level. But this particular new book is priced below the Campbell Biology.
Used to seeing a college textbook cost $300 these days, and.
Yes.
So there's that.
Mm-hmm.
I apologize if you mentioned this already, but I missed it. How many students do we have, you know, averaging?
Yeah, I can, I, I have that information for you. So for AP Biology, you know, it, it varies high school building to high school building, how many sections we offer. I can tell you, over the last couple of years, Evergreen's had one section, Mountain View's two, Henry Delax has two to three sections, Heritage has one section, and Union is our strongest program with five sections.
So what's that mean in numbers of kids?
Yeah, so for, somewhere between 340 and 260, depending on the year. We haven't really got all the forecasting nailed down for this next year.
Okay, that's.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, it always seemed to be a well-attended and well-forecast course of study.
Yeah, it's a popular course. Any other questions before I move on to AP Physics Algebra-Based? Okay, so our next Resource Review Team convened to consider resources for AP Physics. Just a little bit of background about AP Physics. There are actually four exams that College Board offers. There's AP Physics 1, AP Physics 2, and then there are two AP Physics Calculus exams that I'll get to. So we have three courses that cover those exams, and we've previously been served by a single textbook. It was a Walker physics textbook that we adopted, I believe, in 2012. And when I convened the Resource Review Team, very similar to the AP Biology team, we had representation from each of our high schools. And we, we have typically one AP Physics teacher in each building, and all of them were involved. And when we came together to consider the resources and bringing those up to date, they strongly felt we needed a separate resource for AP Physics 1 and AP Physics 2, which are algebra-based courses. And then there's an AP Physics with calculus course, and they need a separate book for that because of the higher-level math. And so this first, this first one-pager that I'm showing you is the algebra-based. So we used to serve both courses with a single textbook, and we're moving to having two separate AP Physics textbooks. This first one is algebra-based. One of, so when we consider which textbooks to look at, the Resource Review Team again is looking at that alignment to the College Board exam description, making sure that the resource really supports students and, and gaining the, the knowledge and skills that they need to be successful on those College Board exams. And the, the, we had several good textbooks to look at. It kind of came down to splitting some hairs. And what the AP Physics Resource Review Team really came, came to an agreement on was putting those textbooks in front of students and asking them, is this a readable textbook? What do you like about the features of the text that help you learn? How do the problem sets allow you to practice the things that you need to practice? And so the textbook that they chose is College Physics: A Statistic Approach by Knight. And it is also, again, integrated with Canvas. It has really rich problem sets and a strategic approach to problem-solving that the teachers really liked. So these Pearson textbooks come with a, a digital platform called Modifying Mastering Physics. It includes an interactive textbook. It includes a variety of problems and embedded video tutoring solutions, which is also a really great feature. So say you get one of the online problems wrong, there's a tutorial video that walks you through, showing you step-by-step how to solve those problems. It also has a phone-based app for students. So on their personal devices, if they'd like to access the, the digital text in that way, they can have that option. And so that is our AP Physics Algebra-Based Proposed Adoption. Questions?
Go for it.
I noticed they're all looking at one particular person.
I.
In his element.
I'm in my, I'm, I'm reviewing curriculum. It's, it's really.
Yeah, and there are those preview links. So if you want to see the whole online prep platform, we have that preview link with a, a demo login.
Looking at the link over to the College Physics Algebra book, the Knight-Jones.
Yeah.
And the first thing that popped up when I tapped on the link was an ad to sign up for Pearson Plus.
Yes, so that is that app. There's a phone-based app.
And it says it's a $10, it's a $10 charge.
Oh, that is interesting. So that is something that has, is the first time I've seen this pop up. And I am wondering, I'll need to double-check with my rep, but I would assume that is included in our subscription. Because a lot of these books have different ways of purchasing them, and it can be just a student buying their own standalone access, which might be that $9.99. So I'll have to ask if that is included in our digital subscription or not.
Yeah, it's, I think we actually wrote it in one of our policies with the Technology Initiative, the LIFT Initiative, that.
Yeah, we would not require students.
We would not require students to pay a surcharge for other products. But my other concern really has to do with whether or not they're going to experiencing advertisements by Pearson for Pearson products while trying to learn physics.
Yeah, that's a good question.
And I would prefer that we avoid presenting a branded ad during school to anybody. I don't think that it's appropriate.
Yeah, we'll clarify that with our.
I'm looking at John when I say that.
Rep and have that answer for you at first reading, yeah. Should it go to that, yeah. Other questions?
Some physics books, I think.
It's very heavy. Yeah.
Very heavy.
It's part of our physical ed. Yeah, so AP Physics fluctuates quite a bit, school year to school year. So let's see, currently, so 2021, we had sections just at, no, that's. I just have enrollment. I don't have sections. So AP Physics 1 2021, we had 129 students taking AP Physics 1 and three students taking AP Physics 2. And then this last year, we had 123 students in AP Physics 1 and eight students in AP Physics 2.
We're going to have to start providing chiropractic services for students carrying those books.
We often have students leave the physical book at home and then access the digital.
And that, yeah, now that it's on the phone and digital, that's kind of nice because that's a huge book.
Right, you'll see students that come with this book full of stickies and like they're, they're really engaged in it, which is great.
They're, so they will be handed out to students, checked out the way the textbooks have always?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. This is the calculus one?
Um.
Is this the Physics C?
This is the Physics Algebra-Based.
Algebra-based.
Yes. And I thought I had the calculus-based book in my cubicle, but it is still in the hands of one of my Resource Review teachers, so I can get you that as well. Any further questions on AP Physics with Algebra? Okay, moving on to AP Physics with Calculus, exact same Resource Review Team as AP Physics with Algebra. We currently don't have enough students forecasting to have a teacher at each high school teaching AP Physics with Calculus. That is a goal of ours, is to have that offered at every building. Currently, AP Physics with Calculus is at Mountain View and Union, and we would like to see that expanded. Interestingly enough, the, the teachers did end up selecting an AP Physics book for AP Physics C by the same author. And so it's the same problem-solving approach, the same strategies, but obviously the math is at a calculus level. This was the most challenging resource to find. There are a lot of textbooks that are in this higher-ed bag for college that we actually don't really have access to as a K-12 institution. And the way that purchasing works for college is way different than it is for high school. So we had to kind of go back and forth with several of the publishers to find a resource that we could purchase as a K-12. that we could purchase as a K-12 institution. But we are satisfied that this resource really does align, again, with that college exam description and the requirements of College Board, supportive for students who are reaching those high, rigorous standards for AP Physics with Calculus. The dynamic study modules were something that teachers really liked. There's a lot of responsive, responsiveness in the digital platform as students are either answering questions right or wrong. It gives targeted feedback to students, and the teachers can see that as well if they have multiple students, you know, which particular questions are most of the students missing. All of those things are part of the, are part of the digital resources. So very, very similar to the AP Physics with Algebra, but again, with that higher level of math that teachers really feel is needed to help the students with that advanced class. Interestingly enough, AP Physics C is a year-long course, but students take two AP exams. There's AP Physics with Calculus Mechanics exam and AP Physics with Calculus Electromagnetic exam. So it prepares them for both. So those students, when they sit for exams in May, are actually sitting for two exams. They are rock stars.
Just looking through that book, I was like, these students are brilliant.
This is the Calculus-based.
The engineering one?
Yeah.
Physics for Science, okay. Strategic, Physics for Science and Engineers, a strategic one.
Seen some symbols in the chapter on vector mathematics that suggest, hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
It's college-level.
It is definitely college-level. Yeah. Any questions about AP Physics with Calculus? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Is that you? Sure. You want that one?
That's it?
Different travel request? There you go. I'm just gonna use that one.
So I just leave this here?
Wherever you would like.
Perfect. Come here.
Hello. I'm Kimberly Miller. I am a Family Consumer Science TOSA, and I've also been a health teacher, and I was the chair of this review committee. I brought with me Kyle Bingham, one of the teachers that was on the review committee, to talk to you about the health book and what we found. We did have a teacher from each of the high schools, as well as the Spanish teacher that is teaching our Spanish health curriculum. That was one of the driving forces of, as we looked at textbooks, what we were looking for and why, because we are going to be offering two courses that are integrated, full-on Spanish, and so we needed resources for that class. Our current textbook is a 2010 textbook, so it's wellfully out of date. And so that's another driving force, plus we have textbooks in the classrooms that are needing to be replaced, and we wouldn't want to replace the 2010. So one of the other big issues was that we want online availability, and so that was something we were really looking for. We did find that there are very few companies right now making health textbooks. So out of Goodheart-Wilcox, Prentice-Hall, Sengage, Northwest Textbook Depository, McGraw-Hale, Houghton-Mifflin-Harkort, and Glencoe, we got from Goodheart-Wilcox and Glencoe. That was it. So out of all those, that was the only availability that there was. In Goodheart-Wilcox, we were able to get two textbooks. One was Essential Health and one was Comprehensive Health. And in Glencoe, we were able to get Health Smart. And so we pulled all three of those books. One of the books, Comprehensive Health, had a very comprehensive sex ed curriculum, and since we're doing flash curriculum, we took that one out. Figured we did not need that. The Essential Health was the same textbook without the sex ed curriculum, so we took that one away. We reviewed both of those, covering all of our areas, and I'm going to have Kyle tell you a little bit about what the teachers found in just a moment. We did have one-on-one meetings and Zoom meetings and review online, and then evaluated that, lots of information, questions back and forth, questions to our publishers, and some of the very interesting things that happened today. If you look here on your online access, for online access, the top one, where for high school, the Evergreen Access Code, I talked to them today, and I said, let's extend it to the end of June for our school board. She said, no problem. I looked at it this afternoon about 4:00, and she said, uh-oh, they cut it off rather than extending it. So tomorrow morning, I've been promised that one will be extended for you to go through June. But she did show us the junior high one, which if you click into that one, you can see the high school as well and the junior high science, or, excuse me, Spanish. As I said, one of the big issues was that we needed a Spanish textbook and Spanish resources, and that was very hard to find. At the time that we first started reviewing this, they had the textbook in Spanish, but they did not have a teacher book or any of the resources. And so as we talked to them and one other district talked to them, they have, they came back and said, we will give you a certificate where you can go ahead and translate. And then just this last, I don't know, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, they said, we have decided to translate the whole thing for you. So today, when I talk to her, they will be available in one month for the whole thing translated for high school. Junior high has been translated. You can see the resources and how it's done. And this was a very heavy resource-laden program that we really thought had a lot to offer. One of the other things that was very interesting that we found out was when you integrate this in Canvas, you log into Canvas, and that's your passcode in. So you don't have to have an individual passcode per class. And they suggest finding out your, our biggest semester. So as an example, if we were to buy the bundle, if you look at down here, if we were to buy the bundle where we had, say, a classroom set or even a school set of hardback books and then have a online access, they would have us look at our largest semester. So if our first semester, because it's a semester-long course, had 300 students across the district taking the course, they would recommend we buy a 300 certificates or licenses through Canvas. And the next semester, if there's 250, we don't buy again. They, we just reuse that 300. So we don't have to continually update. And speaking of updating, they do update the book every three, four months, and so if it's online, you get that updated version as well online.
Thank you, Kim. My name is Kyle Bingham. I'm a health teacher at Mountain View. I've been a health teacher at Mountain View for seven years now. When I came to the district, I came into using our current text that we currently use now, and we had classroom sets, and we also had sets that are individuals that could be checked out by students through our library or through our bookroom. With that, we also had online accessibility at that time. As time progressed, we lost that accessibility. We kind of, as teachers, found ways to get around, found some other ways to access it online, and as the years have rolled on, less and less. Currently, right now, to be honest, especially pandemic, you know, kind of, you find, you find something you got to do to get content to kids, especially during pandemic. I was able to procure somehow PDF copies of chapters to be able to post in the Google Classroom. Had to find a way. And even though this text also, yes, become 12 years old. So with looking at the Goodheart-Wilcox text, my fellow teachers at the other high schools, we basically were thinking, hands down, this is the best for our, for our kids. So looking at it, again, as Kimberly was already talking about, just kind of the updates that the company's already starting to do, one of the biggest pieces that also stands out technology-wise, it links to Canvas. And we're all going that, as teachers, we're going that direction, using Canvas, you know, leaving Google Classroom, using Canvas. And again, that opera, you know, that gives a huge opportunity for our students to be able to have better access at home, especially with our kids using their one-to-one devices. Also, teaching resources for us, again, there's a lot of different assignments, activities, again, other, you know, levels of differentiation to help meet our, you know, our students of ELL, things like that. Also, our IEP students going through with that. Also for assessments, they have pre- and post-assessments to help us also, that's, you know, in the text and the curriculum. But also, you know, other ways to assess students as well, you know, for performance task-based and things like that, to help serve our other students. So basically, overall, I would say, as a hands-down, we think this is, you know, probably the best way to serve our students here at the Evergreen School District, you know, across the board. Thank you.
Any questions for us?
Yeah, it's coming.
Is this a curriculum that's used for credit advancement in the summer?
One more time, please?
Is this a curriculum that's used for credit advancement in the summertime?
We haven't checked into that, but we can definitely check into that and find out. Yeah. So for like, use it for like, summer school courses, yeah, we can check into that, see if that would be useful for them as well.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is legislative updates.
Do you have one more quick thing to tell you?
Oh, yeah.
Also come with a professional development. They will come and train our staff. We're using the textbook through Canvas and have a one-on-one person for technology issues.
Oh, nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The end.
Let me say that again. The legislature is out of session. However, WASDA's position proposal window is open until tomorrow. Our board schedules, the way we schedule our meetings are always just out of sync with that process, but if we find that WASDA has a position that we'd like to modify or a position we'd like WASDA to vote on, there are ways for members of the Legislative Committee to introduce those positions in their own name, or emergency positions, which would require that we get four other school districts to sign on. So the opportunity is still there. My sense is that with, I think it was 200-odd positions, WASDA's biggest focus is to try and find all the ones that have been, that constitute accomplished work and go to General Assembly and repeal them. The other piece of news about General Assembly, and stop me if I get this one wrong, Julie, is that it will be held virtually instead of returning to an in-person model because turnout was greater.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. And, well, I can hope that we can use our own webcams and be seen by others instead of what had to happen the last two years. That's the condition, and that way, the event, as it's been explained to me, remains free of charge. So we've got friends in other districts who don't normally come to General Assembly. Here's a big chance. Yep.
Any other legislative updates? John, do you have anything for legislative? Nothing? Okay, then, the time is 8:44, and I'm calling our meeting adjourned. Have a good night.